Buses and was holding down down. We decided to not put buses up at this time because we didn't want to put the general poll for our budget in charge. Does that make sense? May not agree with this, does it make sense?
Well, I just don't understand because several years ago, there was no lacrosse. Now you get sixteen some lacrosse.
Right.
They go out on trips. Which takes an extra bus. Many, not every day, but many days, every one of our spare buses is in use. And we even combine runs. Like I might take four kids with somebody else's run. Somebody else takes a couple because there's just no buses available to get these kids home. Because there's so many buses, however, bus breaks. And we've worked the best we can and we'll put two teams in one bus. Maybe drop one team off at Amber High School with the next team off in West Seneca and then the version particular team. So we're doing everything we can to save.
That's good.
But if we turn it, you know, adding on these, you know, sports where there are trails or sort of suits and many times you can't do that because you might go into Holland and then Southwest and then you can't combine those. Which is not feasible.
Well, and I think that's why we heard a strong term community that in looking at our athletics program, are there ways that we can, that we can say that one of the things that came out probably was transportation costs as an example. Should we not have a late, late bus? Should we, for example, not cover transportation to, to all games? The comment that when I was talking about intramural sports, if kids play, and that was one of the things that that particular parent said, kids play intramural sports, we need a bus. So, you know, the, the issue of transportation and buses is linked to all the other, all the other things that require transportation. So this is, this is all working together simultaneously. So that's, that's one of the things as a board and I look back at why, why we use full buses, why I was not so in favor of the new school buses was because gee, if we can consolidate. If we can repair what we have and consolidate runs and consider all the ways of working, then maybe we need fewer buses.
I would.
Can I also address the lacrosse? Just to let you know that the boosters, boosters do donate money for our modified, both girls and boys, so the district, the teachers are not paying for that.
The other thing about the, the bus plan was we were told that the transportation run was looking at reducing another couple runs and if that's the case, that should be very critical of the whole bus system. So we've logged this time at the cap of busing resources. And we can't put that on any kind of line if we didn't do all the actual buses.
And if I remember correctly, it's like before, but the basic, the plus, we were in that game, the plus, we planned a retirement cost. So really go that game, the plus, and still have issues with that. Still have issues with no spare buses, which is that we're trying to retire the school. So we put it out there, both, what they gave me, the buses, and the additional buses.
Okay. I understand it. At the field for American Army, but I don't want to talk about that. When I started working here, many of the buses were going 200,000 miles plus. And I thought, and I still say you can say we've got most hands over the top now. They do a great job to be the little buses. Reason that they changed that, which I don't believe any of you were here in the 26th year ago when we started, but the reason they changed that, we started selling off buses at earlier state when they were a lot less miles down was because by the time we settled, then we were junk. We would make maybe 100, 200 hours.
We're not getting much more now.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just letting you know, they really, something just come up one more time, that we said we should last, you know, wire ourselves for that few miles. That was one of the reasons why we quickly did them that long. And like the words it said, most of the tax number already recovered the bus is not the energy. It's because maintaining the old stuff, the transmissions and the exhaust systems and suspensions and all that comes to cost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Crystal Carroll and I'm staying up here as a spokesperson for our buddies. I really was prepared to speak, but it seems like athletics has brought us a lot. I do have a question at the end, but I'd love to say that some of the suggestions that people are making are great suggestions to save money to, um, athletic, but they're illegal per New York State. So your pay to play suggestion, it's a wonderful suggestion, but public schools cannot do it legally in New York State. And I don't think a lot of people in the public know that because I know that's been brought us. As far as having volunteers instead of coaches, that's also illegal. A coach has to be certified as a coach. Anybody that comes in, her, your state, her, O C that he followed, has three spiders to get their coaching certification. That's three classes, that's three printing, that's first aid, that's C D F. So as a volunteer issue, it's a wonderful issue. It's also a very tricky issue that you're getting in as parents of little league sports. You can understand how it's very difficult with soccer, but it's illegal in New York State. As far as transportation fees, I've been working with Mr. Bugs and Lisa and Rosie as far as how do we clean up the transportation fees because it does cost a lot. But I'm also finding that there are rules and guidelines per policies that O C sets, per New York State sets that we have to follow. So there's a number of wonderful suggestions, but they're illegal. So I'm actually up here asking because athletics should be on the block as you're talking about administration, teachers and all that, and I understand that. What are you looking for through the areas of athletics that I could help you with? That isn't illegal and is still the best way, that's the one I did. Because I believe that every son to twelve for your should have the opportunity that we don't have in high school, which was having music, our, our technology folks and all the sports, but. And I think there's ways to do it without chopping off the programs. So I'm wondering if there's something I can help you with that's not my local suggestion, but it's illegal.
Speaking to the survey, the, the obvious area of community may not necessarily know it's legal, but those were my suggestions, those were from, those were from all of us.
It seemed like that.
Yeah, but that, no, that's fine. The pay to play thing, from what I understand, takes the sport completely out of the school's responsibility, so, so.
That's a club team.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the club teams. Is that a term you're referring?
Well, some people confuse it. They think you can do the pay to play, like it would be like a Catholic school. Because Catholic schools basically they do a pay to play. You know, you mentioned Amber, I believe that some people, those are hockey and gymnastics. Those are club teams that really aren't, I really have nothing as the athletic charges.
They're not school spots, right?
Right. And that, that was the suggestion, to pull it out. Or, or if there was a sport that made sense, what, what that particular parent was saying, to pull it out and make it, make it.
And just to leave it all, that changes the dynamics because you can't play until it's, even nobody play against.
Well, you play against all the other club teams.
Yeah, but basketball volleyball, they're not our club teams. Hockey's huge and we're lucky not to get hockey because it's extremely expensive, sadly, hockey people. But if you can call volleyball out, it's the same thing with intramural, the summer meet traders. You would have to play against yourself and you're coming into basically those summer program and I pretty much guarantee, I can't guarantee, but I could pretty much speak from a lot of experience. If you were to do that with certain sports, you would see those kids need that intramural to go to maybe the more competitive one. It gets to travel and play with the other kids we do, if we wanted to go to different offices than any. But our modified courts, if you look through the presentation that I'm sure Mr. Bugs is giving you before, it's really a small percentage of our actual budget because they really don't, we don't travel anywhere that's, you know, really close. So it is every, um.
I'm so glad to say.
It's understanding that they better have, everybody better.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, what you say, yeah, you can. I said, so I have a question for you, as you stated earlier.
Aye.
And I would like you to possibly be with the association myself and I would like to relook at it instead of that we did present. You basically said there'd be a $4,000 savings for teacher home.
That's a.
Excuse me, I'm wrong. Okay, you might look. Do a count to the speed, not just trust it, do the math. That was with replacement of a teacher at $38,000 last year. That was only four items in incentive, basically, or that effective teacher salary, one of them's social security, secondly is work and compensation. Thirdly is medical insurance and fourthly is the employee contribution rate. Basically, the employee contribution rate approximately 11.11% for the following year, that correct, three sessions. All right, then you're basically, employee kind of company for teachers. Okay, I'm talking teachers now. The thing is that.
That's the part that the district thing is, do you have the teacher return 11% of their profit? Thank you.
So if we look at that 11% approximately, on a teacher salary, and I'll speak it right out to $8,000, there's approximately $8,000 you can save by getting rid of a teacher. I'm really concerned about this because, first of all, I'm experienced in work here today, we want to make square choices. Secondly, okay, we want to look with blinders off and I personally, along with my association, Dan, you know, staff members in the district, that I would really look at real well. And I'm talking district, mine, staff numbers, not just teachers, I'm an administrator, I'm in the C S E A, people, okay? And in closing, I basically would like to ask you to go read the November 22nd article in the Times up. And you read it, it's really appealing, possibly something about you can read the song and develop a new thing. But that article from Lake Shore Central Schools specifically stated from the Board of Education, but they had a savings overall. And I'm concerned, not only myself, but I think I can speak on, you have to give administrators here, and I can speak on, you have to C S E A, and anyone else would like in this, I mean, that you should consider because of what Lake Shore said, not only the place, but anybody else.
And your proposal, can I ask a question?
I don't have a point, so I'm only asking people back, I'm, I'm.
How, how much were you asking for per teacher to be paid to retire?
Well, that was the thing, okay, it's like buy a house, you can negotiate with us and you didn't even, you didn't even negotiate with us, that was the big deal. Tuesday, Wednesday morning, Mr. Bugs came down to me and he said to me, Mr. Almazie, for this one, whatever the case, you're not going to be able to. Yes, okay, thank you very much. Couple of players, and it's, they knew about the choir, they knew about the choir association. You voted on it Monday night or Tuesday morning and they wrote it in the report the following week.
And they didn't have a vote on that.
Oh, excuse me, it's that.
Yeah, we had a discussion with that.
Why the vote? That's my question, thank you. Why the vote?
All right, I'll state it again, the reason it wasn't a vote, because the net savings after a payment of $25,000 or $28,000 for a buyout, that savings was $4,000 per position. And $4,000 to lose 20 years of experience per person, just didn't seem like a good idea to spend $4,000 to lose 20 years of experience per person. That's, that's why we did this. Next question please.
Please stop listening, so I'm not.
Good morning, Rich Schaper, Principal, Resident, Sound Tech Design. The follow up, my grandpa Pierce's question about the, the additional revenue that just came out from the space, that's about $227,000. Miss Almazie, is that in the current revenue projection?
It will be, we can do that on Monday through Friday.
Oh, so the new revenue projection will change by about 227,000, so therefore the, the budget gap will change by about 227,000.
And the projection for the future will.
All right, now we, now we'll do this. Second question, and it is proceeded with a statement, but I realize this is jeopardy and has to be an informal question, which makes you Alex, correct. I bring this up and I'd be remiss not to bring this up as the senior member of the administrative unit. A reduction administrative unit at this time is premature, and there's basically two reasons for this. The amount of new federal and New York State initiatives is basically unprecedented in any of our professional careers. And it is daunting when you couple this with the day to day operational requirements that each administrator is responsible for. Some of these include, and some of these terms are going to be unfamiliar to parents. And I would dare to say some of them are even unfamiliar to people working in the organization. The race to the top requirements, the comma four wording standards in E L A and math, the new teacher A P B R process, the new evolving administrator A P B R process. The R T I monitor, response intervention, what we used to call remedial, and the constant analysis of A M S web data. The development of student learning objectives, better known as S L Os. Electronic tracking of period by period student attendance, electronic posting of grades for the parent portal, reporting all data to New York State, constant verification of this data. The new evolving H A R P assessments, partnership assessment of readiness for college and career, dignity for all students act, inquiry teams, C D F, staff development, interim assessments, and common assessments. That's part one, the question's still coming. All the alignment, the alignment study of the schools basically consolidated to two schools. And it's the other being accepted by the board that I made that proposal and you want to see more, it would be showing by now. But it's, it's really just the beginning stages. This is juxtaposed against the illegal against for being in the top 10 and you're accounting for E L A and math within three years and then the top five within five years. So decreasing the administrative workforce at this time would greatly compromise our ability to accomplish these mandates, unfunded mandates. Administration has decided for not meeting this daunting list of requirements. The question is, how do you want to that proceed? This body of work to be accomplished in the last administration. And I know that is only one of the proposals that was put up there via the survey, which we know is not a scientific survey, and you understand that. But I thought I'd be remiss as a senior member of the administrative unit, if I did at least mention it.
It's a great question. All right, now we'll be taking questions for about 10 women.
Topper, top, five, I'm.
Our support team, the love drivers, P C A, I D, O T, P T, et cetera. We hear a lot of people retiring in that sort of position for P C A. I've heard nothing about any of our staff retire, not fill those positions, and I've been wondering if there was something that was being considered, if you know, from the budget, et cetera.
We don't give any retirements for your, for our community, yeah? The teachers, we have retirements.
Okay, but if somebody, if someone retires, is there any plan to not fill those positions? Like they come up in September, we, you know, internally, we know that we might be able to want in September, but they should then be like, well.
It's included in the budget.
It's included in the budget, okay. Secondly, we give a set position already, it's not being filled. Is there any, any reason not to do that at this point? Because it's already, it should be included in the budget for next year, correct? Here we have, we didn't fill, I mean, do you have.
I guess, I guess in your, the question is in regards to a cleaner position, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Let me just, let me clarify that in that there is, there is a clean position open, there is a opportunity to fill that, they're now being filled with a sub. We've held off, now it's scheduled to go to the, to the board or appointment in April. We've held off on that appointment, just waiting to see what the board wishes to do with, with reductions. There's a concern on my part that if we're looking at a reduction of some sports staff, including a cleaner position, that we hire someone now in April to start mid-April or late April and then we have to lay that individual off if they've left it on the job. If we're going to reduce that position come July 1st. So ultimately, once the, once the dust settles with regards to where, where we want to be, where the board wants to be with the budget, we will make the decision as to whether we're going to fill it immediately or hold off.
So you don't want to be done with the.
We have, that's the one line in which we still.
Correct.
Okay, okay. And if, if I was wondering how much thought was put into charging outside agencies for use of the building, has there been brought before? There is, you know, the afterwards, the electric, the use of facilities, the water, et cetera, holing, shoving. How much thought has there been put into charging outside agencies, even though it's phenomenal, even if they cover the opposite of the building?
It was still a consideration.
That's one line in which that's on the list of possible uses.
Okay, but I get that.
No, a lot of these things haven't decided, we're trying to just get a term of approval, so only this week we'll start getting more, things locked down.
That's it, thank you.
My name is Amaus Aager. Lisa, you are looking at the, the, as you did, as the 2% as the A reduction. Isn't it true though that New York State, aren't we getting last year, next year, and the year, would it be that it's not last year, 2%?
No, we're actually, we're actually seeing an increase based on what we, what we read in paper this morning, a 226 dollar dollar increase over last year.
That's not the only thing, okay. I have a couple, a couple small questions. The, the additional, are there possible cuts, yes, are they being presented to the state? My, my. When you talk about, when you talk about possibly an increase in taxes, is that something that, is, you haven't really talked a lot about it, but is that something that you're considering? Or does the idea of adding up on a contingency above the budget, is that a concern at all?
So first, basically, if I understand you correctly, we already have children today, like we saw today, 2% increase, so that is already fact.
Talking to the mic, please?
I don't think that might slow the.
Oh, okay.
I'm using pretty loud, oh, lucky now. And considering the draft three, we already have that, did a 2% increase already into the tax rate this year. So there really 2% tax rate.
And there should be a, a, right?
Slightly under the deal.
Yeah, correct. The, within the tax cap, the board can choose to raise taxes to 2.94% and still stay under the cap. But thus far, in the budget proposals that have been put forth, it is at 2%. Anything above the 2.94 would require a 60%, 60% majority of vote.
And they also depend upon a contingency that goes down twice?
Correct, well, if it goes down twice, doesn't matter whether it's 2% and it's only requires 50%, if we don't get 50% of the vote, it goes down, it goes down twice, we go to contingency curve.
And with a contingency budget, we can't exceed the shared budget, so.
Right, so is that, is that why, is that a concern that that's why you're not really talking about that vote?
The thing we need to talk about that is that part's easy to do.
Okay, got it.
We can figure that out anytime soon, add money.
Okay.
The harder part is trying to figure out what to say.
I have one final question. And it's with regard to what Mr. Schaper said about administration. I, I'm also concerned about different unfunded mandates that are coming down. I also understand that for years now, they've been coming down and then they've been changing and this is all something that the administration has to get ready for and then it changes, they have to get ready for something new. So my, my, my concern is, just that, who said that, expressed about a month and a half ago, that so much of it I had never heard before. For instance, we're going to be, the kids are going to be expected to take all those state tests online and that's within two years. So I, I think we need to be real careful about having computer lessons because the kids come up, they don't, they need to know how to operate the computer because those tests are, those tests are sold here to those kids. And then it's got components that they're not comfortable on a computer. And so I think, I, I'm concerned about administration as well because I see, I see where all those changes are coming. They all come through administration and obviously that's not a work as well. My question, my question regarding that is, and this is something that I just don't understand from the last meeting, I was just asking for clarification. When Mr. Schaper offered, the administration offered to do a study about closing a building, is, are your reservations about having him go ahead and do that regarding, like, what are your reservations? Are they because of how the study needs to be done or who has to do the study?
Don't, don't have any reservations, it's just a matter of timing to, to look at what the scope of the proposal would be, that's all.
Got it.
We're just kind of busy with the budget thing right now, so.
And certainly that study would be able to be done between now and the end of budget time.
So that, that would more likely affect, that would be from the sector.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Two or, two or three, two or three years after.
That's not a simple thing.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Let me take two more.
Hi, my name is Lucy.
Okay, three more, please, I don't know.
First, I'll be honest, I'm originally from Pennsylvania, so a lot of what is called the New York City law, I think, I don't very clear. What I wanted to know, what portion of what has to be spent is state mandated? And does what the state contributes to the school budget, cover that or not? And if not, why can't a legal challenge not be leveled? I can understand when the woman spoke of how it is illegal to require a contribution for each per sport participation. At that point, when that law was passed, there may not have been the budget constraints that there currently are. The law is to give it and is meant to be challenged. It is also quite frequently that legislators pass laws that are technically not legal, which is why you have a judicial system and why you have a process of judicial review of legislation. And I think that those areas that could be challenged, maybe not necessarily simply as an individual's school review, but as required. I mean, you can't tell me that you're with an education and college are having the same issues. Where they're continuously forced to cut down on staff for administration and, because of state unfunded mandates. I think that if you can find out what proportion is being mandated, it may be possible to demand, possibly even under the child left behind. That we are being sweet to the point where we cannot provide proper education. And the other thing is, do we have any statistics on postgraduate success? Where we can prove that our high school graduates, you know, what percentage go on to junior college, actual college, use their technical training that they received here to go into becoming plumbers, electricians, artists. And we have classical college, how many of them go on to become successful classical colleges? There are a whole bunch of things that I think that we can prove, we are already doing it well and therefore need continuing funding. And if the state continues to squeeze, put it back, put the honest back on the stage.
I heard several questions in the school, let me see if we can, I'll tackle this too. The first one is, how much of our budget is mandated, broken?
Comes through, comes through state mandates.
Yeah, maybe.
On the top of the head, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to say that we, we actually control based on whether it's mandates, well, let me, let me tackle it in another way because it's, it's easier for me to, because I use this number on an annual basis. Our budget increases annually for mandates, legal obligations, contracts between four and a half and five percent annually, if there's an increase built in. We have to, we have to work at that point back to reduce our budget. So ultimately, there's a, there's a large portion of mandates. Public education in the state of New York is the most highly regulated business, if you will, in the country. So if I'm, and again, don't, don't hold me to this exact number, but I. So, um, if I'm, and again, don't, don't hold me to this exact number, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that we control about twenty-five percent of our budget.
I guess that's my point, is that maybe it's time to start pushing back on the budget.
There is, there is a great deal of, of pushback, um, from the multitude of organizations, the issues, the, and also our current governor has a, has a task force in place to look at unfunded mandates. Um, and the legislature has looked at putting stop on mandates, um, that will require to be funded unless the funding is also approved with them. The, the issue that we, um, and that we struggle with is, is the setup in the state of New York is the multiple entities that can mandate. It's not just the state government and through laws, it's also state education department that operates in the same vein as, as the support of education operates. And that they can make a policy and regulation that includes, um, additional funding. One of those examples has to do with regents exam, regents materials. We, we are sent regents exams, um, on a, an annual basis, twice a year. Should be over ordered by three or four, or half a dozen, or a dozen. They charge that back to us now. Um, all of the, um, printed material, the ancillary products that come with that, the, the, um, reference tables and the graphs, those all used to come to us, now they're sent to us electronically. All the training materials for our teachers to correct those assessments, both regents exams as well as three eight assessments, now come to us electronically where we have to reproduce those. Those are all state, um, requirements that are placed on us. Uh, there are, we, there's, there's constant pushback, if you will, um, and has been both of them. From administrative perspective, boards of education, uh, and again, we're all represented by various groups, whether it's New York State School Boards, Super Tennis Group, uh, New York State Teachers, uh, New York State Administrators are all being backed constantly. I don't know that our voice has yet to be here, be heard, both from a legal standpoint and not just, not just pushback verbally, but from a legal standpoint, I think we also have to understand that, um, the laws of New York State are still being made or the determinations are still being made, um, by three individuals. That's, that's really the way the state government set off, that the, uh, has the senate, has the assembly and the governor really are making those decisions. And until we can change that and give our legislative a little bit more of a voice, um, I don't know if we're gonna see a lot of change.
And is our board curbing the, of other local boards?
We work for the School Board Association, New York State School Board Association, United States School Association.
So you, you have active legal proceedings or?
No, just a legal, active legal proceedings, all of the state school board association has some people on there, so yes.
And there's a pushback, uh, handling an, an agenda, and believe me, I have, have attended a number of meetings with both the governor's representatives and, uh, state, uh, board regents representatives and commissioner of education. Uh, there's a great deal of public, public pushback. Um, especially now with the rapid movement of, um, the common core standards, the new evaluation process. The fact that we're going to track new students by, by minute, and I don't know that anybody even knows that, but that infrastructure has to be in place within the next, uh, two years, um, in order to track our students, for the evaluation process by the minute. Not just as Mr. Schaefer alluded to, um, you know, their attendance in, in courses or during the day that were traditionally done. We will be recording when they, when they enter, uh, the clinic because they're ill, and they're exiting the clinic, and they're re-entering the classroom when they're attending their music lesson. Uh, whenever they're out of the classroom, we will be, we will be measuring the time that's gonna be required.
Thank you.
I'm really uncomfortable standing up in front of some of my children, I have my parents on, and I don't parent a kid here. And nobody more than I wanted to come in front of you this morning with a winning lotto ticket so that I could sell all of the time. But our last one number is not even on the million or me.
Looks like all of them will be gone.
It would have been a lot of fun. First, I want to, um, beg you not to undermine the art and music programs while you are going through your, um, through your line items. Um, it has taken decades to build these programs up, and as a, as a product of the East Central School decades and decades ago, I've seen these programs strengthen year by year, and if you hack them with a hatchet, you will never regret that. Um, also, my, my question at the end here is, um, if I come back again on Monday for more of this fund, um, I want to be able to see specific items listed, um, as to what you are looking at cutting specifically.
Some of that stuff is, some of that stuff is in supermajor form. There's, we've asked a couple times for the, uh, the insurance chapter to get a list of possibilities to close some numbers. For now, we're working at a high level, um, so those numbers, one round went out, we'll be another round out on Monday. Look at those and have a hope of trying to actually get more selected on things.
So we can comment, say, okay, this is...
And there is a, there is a list there of all of those, um, unfunded, uh, programs that has already been presented to the board, totaling some over $3 million, whatever that list was.
Okay, but I, I can see some of that on Monday, so, okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, it's available on websites and listed as well. I believe it's available on the website there, probably means.
This is Joe Wenke, I'm Eric from the district. Just so everybody knows, in the audience, I am a teacher as well, so, uh, some of my viewpoints may be skewed, either in the parent direction or in the, we got teacher direction. I just, I guess, one of the first things, I heard Mr. Boggs was the first one, right?
That's in that process.
Could have definitely got this wrong, but I thought he said forty students per year would lose it.
Uh, that's an average, that's course, over the course of the last, uh, five, seven years, some, some years it's, it's twenty. For example, I use, use, um, our projection for the coming year, um, is a difference of, of really more than forty. It's gonna be, or coming into, uh, um, in the eighties, probably kindergarten and graduating in the one forties.
Is that based on kindergarten graduation or is that?
That's kindergarten graduate, that's kindergarten graduation.
Being adaptive to that teacher, I teach, is that there are students that are disabled? I said forty students per year should not afford a lot, it will be all upon. That's, that's why I asked, is it forty students per year for graduations, and then I heard that makes a lot of sense.
Correct, that's, that's the, that's the entire, for me.
I just, I kinda wanna make a joke, somebody stole my lottery joke.
I think I'm a son.
So, I guess my first question is, and it's a belief, does the board believe that the school has been doing less? Doing the same thing that they've been doing with less over at least the last three years?
Can I say that, please?
Does the board believe that the school district is doing the same thing they've done the last three years with less? Are they providing the same quality education, putting on the same fantastic school plays, putting things on the field? Or is, does the board of education believe they've been doing the same thing that they've been doing with less?
You said less, you mean last month?
Last month.
Last month?
Yeah.
I think the, uh, less total money, but it's gone up, so it's probably... So the quick answer is done the same or better, but the cost higher.
Okay, so are the, has it, is, are the employees of the district able to do the same thing with less? Do you believe that they're doing the same with less?
Yes, with what they have, but the cost will go up.
Exactly, the cost is going up, but the district is able to do more with less?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, is, sitting at the, the task due, uh, meetings, the communication that I receive from the board is, is contrary to yours. It seems like you guys just wanna continue to cut more because my next question is gonna be for the teachers in the audience. How many teachers have had their supply budgets reduced over the last three years? Now, we're just talking three years. Everyone, okay. Does the board believe the community is, is in support of what the school offers, temporarily and externally? Now, the community as a whole, do you believe that there is support of what the East Central School District provided?
I think it's no.
Okay, so I'm gonna go to Renee Rose's question, with the two percent, which is really 2.94, minimum. Would the board be willing to consider exceeding that, knowing they need a super majority to, to, to be able to provide and continue to provide what the district has provided over the last three years? Is the board willing to consider exceeding a 2.9% increase?
Willing to consider anything, maybe sign into that.
Okay. Now, uh, I guess my...
Again, you wouldn't speak up, this, you know, this is, uh, this is something where I think we're at.
Right, the, the, the two budget lines are based on projections. And a budget is your best guess over next year and the year after next year.
Right.
And the figures show this huge gap, and we don't know exactly what the state and federal government are offering, yet we wanna, as a board, provide this enormous gap to shock the public into this huge number where we don't really understand what it's really gonna be.
No, let, let's be clear, there's nothing about a shock value that's here. This is a straight up budget process to understand where we think we're gonna land over the next few years. Um, that revenue line doesn't look like it's gonna get better because the state does not have a fiscal outlook that's good, the federal government doesn't either, so the best guess is those numbers aren't gonna be getting any better. So we have to project what we best think it is. It's not about shock value, it's mining.
And your expenses are going up too, so it's not like...
Okay, yeah, it doesn't matter, your expenses are going up as well every year.
And what's that thing with other districts that's going on around us? That's obviously not for shock value. How would you think that we would be different from other districts?
I think, I think, uh, there's a couple of things that need to happen. But let me, you may ask my next question. What is the board, what plan does the board have, knowing that there's a tremendous amount of unfunded mandates, new regulations from the state and federal government? What plan does the board have coupled with the restrictions from the state in front of them? And their handcuffing locally that two, two percent, or 2.94 percent have to maintain this quality program? That's a huge question.
It is a huge question. That has to be figured out.
Right. Now, I guess the next thing is, as a board, I would be much, I would be much happier here if I knew the board was willing to advocate strongly for the quality program that the East Central School District provides. Instead, what I seek is status and challenges. We need to be optimistic, we need to be advocates for our children. Each and every one of our children are in school in this district. We need to advocate for that quality program. If we talk about pay for play, I've heard parents say, let me pay a hundred dollars for Mike Chau and be on stage with the rest of the musical. There are parents that can't afford that hundred dollars. Then added up another hundred dollars for football, or soccer, or tennis, or whatever. This is a public school, we need to advocate for that quality. Now, my first question was based on that belief that we, that we are providing quality. Our teachers are doing more with less. We need to work together instead of pulling on opposite ends of the rope. The board, I believe, and that's my final question, are you willing to partner with the communities, with the teachers and the administration to advocate for the quality programs that this district provides?
We have, we are.
I think that's what this session today is all about. We're, we're gathering as much information as we can, Joe, and we're, we're asking as many of the tough questions of, of all of you that, that...
Right, and that's what I think you guys need to, if, if that's what you're doing, you need to communicate that to the public.
Do I need one last minute? All right.
Brian Morrison, Eric, that's there. Um, I've had one question, uh, from our graph, survey regarding the administration.
Okay.
So, as far as the administrators are concerned, what does that equate to percentage wise, the people that respond or pay those comments? Is that twenty-five people or twenty-nine people?
Forty-eight people, a hundred and fifty-three net comments, but it wasn't administrative staff. If you go to the slide after that, there were a number of things in that category. So it included, um, GLP as a building, um, staff, it was all, yeah.
Okay, all right, um, one thing I did notice on there was, I foiled it, I foiled the, uh, the survey. And one thing I didn't see on there was, uh, draft three proposal, there was a lot of comment on that. I think that was gonna work for, uh, a power up there on that.
Well, I think draft one, the reason draft three was coming up, and I, and I saw the, uh, the comments that came in after March nineteenth, at the time of the third budget, and the, those comments appeared to be supporting those three because it was maintaining programs and staff programs, so I grouped those all together.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know what your plan is, your overall plan is with the survey. I would agree that a hundred and fifty-three people taking a survey is representative of the sample, right?
You need, uh...
No.
Right, okay. We just need to make, be careful, make, uh, making any major decision based on small number of respondents. Um, asking for input is a great strategy. However, did we ask for input from the people at their jobs on a day-to-day basis? Were we making decisions based on people, on what people might know? I mean, I read through that, there's some people that obviously, they're not very knowledgeable, they have any idea what happened with school. Um, it's also gonna be pretty scary in this survey, that's, uh, that's why, that's why I pulled out of it. You got, you got some people's opinions, asking direct questions. Are we gonna make a huge, are we gonna make huge decisions that can impact our entire, entire school system based on your minority or opinions today? Are we truly gonna research all the ramifications?
We're trying, we're trying.
One suggestion I do have is, you guys limited to, I understand, it's your first time around on my first side, Global Connect and Parent Forum, uh, a, a small group that did respon, was a community. I'm asking some kind of word out there, there's not every person is a American or a...
Yeah, that's a good point, we did that, so, so last minute, it wouldn't make sense if we had more time with next year, maybe put in a nice, everybody people know, have a physical call, district get a copy, for example, if they don't have access to the computer. Those are kinds of things that we have to make time next year, it would make sense.
Good, that's all I got, thank you.
All right. No, it's your turn. All right, first, uh, the question and answer session, I'd like to thank everyone for the, the positive, telling me to try and work with us on this. I mean, we are doing the best we can, and, uh, whether you agree with the numbers or the approach or anything else, we are trying, trying to come up with our answers. So I'd like to thank you for the positive, telling me the, the interactive discussion on these things. This is, uh, again, it's something you never heard before, so I think it's, uh, I think it's been helpful and hopefully there's that work coming along. Okay, for the next part, we're going to be handing out, uh, I guess the technical term is clickers for these things. All right, so what these are, is these are devices we use in schools. Okay, let's just dollar in, and take it in. So basically, these devices are to get your input. So what we've done is we've put together a, uh, list of ten, eleven questions. The first two are demographic, to understand which group, which group you're in. And then, uh, the rest of the questions are questions that you asked about today, some of them. And they're questions that we have to address ourselves. Difficult questions is the board that we have to make, you know, limited resources is what this is all about now. So we're asking you to make some of those decisions and get your input and, uh, and see what we can open. Now, as, uh, Mr. Burks told, pointed out, our survey was not statistically significant, um, you know, all inclusive. Just as yours is certainly not a representative group of the, uh, of the district. So we will take it as, as input, but certainly not funding, so we wanna, we wanna just do it. But we wanna get your input on all of it, so, so if you tell us a little bit how to use these things, or if you have kids or anything, I'll tell you how to use them.
Okay, there's a power or a drawing button at the bottom of this, you're gonna need, what?
Not everybody has it.
Not everybody has it. Well, I can explain it, it's, it's really not that complicated. You're gonna get them, there's a power button at the bottom, you're gonna press that once, and you'll see your screen activate, and it should come up with the letters T M A.
We got one.
Bingo.
See, she should have been lottery winner, she would have been great, we had a hair roll reading. Raise your hand if you still don't have a clicker. This is technology your students use in school. We have three sets of these, a total of ninety-six clickers that are used in classrooms for anonymous student polling. You're... Your responses are anonymous today. They're only recorded by clicker number. Nobody knows what number you have, so... That's why we use them in school for those shy people that sit in the back that never want to raise their hand. I'm glad you never know.
We'll do DNA sampling later.
It's important when you are answering the question that you wait until I tell you that the question has been started because there's a start and a stop to the question. If you answer during the time that I've activated and then deactivated the question, your response will be recorded. If you do not want a response to be recorded for a question, don't respond, okay? You will see that there's A, B, C, D, E, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 buttons. That's what you need. Please make sure under TMA that only one letter or number show. If it says 2, if you click send, your response will not be recorded. Does that make sense? After you've pressed the letter, make sure it shows on the screen. You're going to press send. You'll see the word sending. You'll see the word received. You'll know that your response has been recorded. You can change your response at any time while the question is still active. Okay, so you could change it about three times as long as the question's still active on the screen. Once the question has ended, your chance to respond has ended. Does that make sense? Any questions? Resend it. Just click again and click send again. Does that make sense? If you accidentally put two letters in, there is a clear button. You can back up and clear one of those letters. A lot of times when the kids are using them, they'll hit V twice and then they'll try to send them because V is not an option. It won't work. Make sense? Yes?
We've never used 90 together before. One thing we're asking is, could you turn off your cell phones? Because these are radio signals and we're anticipating that they may interfere.
So bear with us. This is the first time we've tried this again. I thought of this on Wednesday, I think, so... I have used this with clients before in consulting engagements that worked pretty well. Different opinions to try and gather together. We're ready. Let's try the first question. All right, so in order to... We want to know, again, we don't know individually who you are. We want to know which group you fall into. Okay, so which one? We think we covered everything. You can also see the numbers popping up on the bottom to make sure your score is in there. Is there number one in?
It could be V, right?
So your number slid on your answer has successfully been recorded.
To the 3 there, we have 89 people up.
Eighty-nine, eighty-nine, so... So we still have 20 people that haven't disclosed their demographic group? I guess... Is anyone having a time to lift a call? Sean's here.
We're putting you to modestly important.
I need a combination.
We got it. We're outside. All right, anybody who's in wants to be in? All right, next question.
Do you want us to use the graph right away?
Yeah, that'd be great. All right, so from the...
So residents, students, or 18 residents, or 4 staff members, 12 staff members, 33 students, and 2 students.
Great. All right, we'll see how this is going to go. All right, on to the next demographic. We wanted to figure out how long you've been here. If your views change, a little bit, you've been here a long time. You may have certain beliefs. But if you're new to the district, it may also be bringing some other perspectives from other places. So we want to see how long you've been here.
What about faculty who's not in...
Uh, no. For faculty, same question. How long you've been associated with the district?
So it's great.
Good to feel 69 is within management over here. Anybody? More time? Good? Okay. All right, so must everybody long-term, long-term affiliation with the district? Yes? All right, now we're going to get harder. All right, in order to close, we face this off of some of the things that we've talked about in our meetings, some information from the survey. We tried to come up with some good questions and stuff that we know we have to debate amongst ourselves given all the things we hear in the public. So in order to close the budget gap, which of the following would you choose to reduce first? All right, and I think we can bring out the interview to you. You can only choose one. In all these questions, you can only choose one answer. Then you don't, you don't pull, but... Yeah, that's what we ask. If you had to choose one, what would you choose? Because, again, these are choices that may have to be made. And we're trying to get as much input as we can. All right, it's like, everybody in? Decline not to answer. All right, any more time? Okay. All right, so Dean's transportation, the administration. So roughly half for... Easy goes, right? Transportation administration. Okay, next question. In order to avoid cutting teaching positions, which of the following actions would you choose first? Again, like you choose one. Close building, consolidate with our district, reduce or eliminate extracurricular activity? That's who would be by that as all clubs or sports or music or any of those kinds of things? Or raise the tax by 1.5%? Well, we call it, why is what?
But there's an ability to increase that cap, isn't it, to 2.9?
Right, right. There is. It's called, it's called the 2% tax cap. That's why it's reported that way.
So D would be to make it 2.94?
Sorry?
The community would be to make it 2.94?
No, Dean says raise taxes by 5%. Well, we're trying to get a feel for how much are you willing to spend on this? So the question. I said the reason, I put the 2 in there just calling it because there is a 2% tax. Can you exceed what's called the 2% tax? Just picked a number. I picked a larger one. That's what I did.
So we're asking why didn't you pick the 2.94? Because we could go with 5.94.
It's just, maybe we could have picked a different one. I could have picked any number. That's the one I established. It wasn't. It wasn't. I'm sorry? 5% does exceed the state...
2.94 does not exceed the tax cap.
Bingo. I understand that.
In your mind.
I was picking a number that we went over the state tax cap. Trying to pick a number over the state tax cap by a decent amount because in some situations you have to get there. Okay. I may have picked the wrong point on that. That's the one we went, so just try it. All right, good enough. Over half on close the building, over almost half on raise by 5%. Okay, next one. Some of our elected classes have low enrollment. What do you think is the smallest class size we should have? So what is special at this is a different situation. But we do have some elected courses as we go through and try and look at things that have small enrollment. What do you think is the smallest number of kids we should have in a class and still have that class?
What is currently the smallest number?
I believe it's 1.
1?
1. I think we have 1.
That's not special at it?
That's not special at it.
Is that independent study?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I do know there is...
Independent study is 1.
There's some 1s, there's some 3s. It's the smallest one. That's why I'm trying to get a feel for what people think.
What happens if there's... Are you doing independent study in this week?
Yeah, I guess so, yes. Would that be 4?
What happens if it's a music lesson?
Is music lessons considered one of the first ones?
It is.
Music lessons aren't a regular scheduled class, really?
No.
No, so I would think a regularly scheduled elected that you can choose.
But independent study is a regular schedule. All right, again, one, so if one person is doing an independent study who is studying independently as per the definition of the term and not taking up time from someone other than for a...
Well, I believe if you have, if you're taking an independent study, you still have to work with a faculty member, right?
Correct. I would also like to point out that there are some electives that are limited by the amount of equipment in a room. For example, there are some computer classes, whatever, that have only 15 available machines. So therefore, there could only be 15 kids in the class. So that needs to be taken into consideration, that some of it is equipment.
All right, 63, 30. All right, so for the cap on C10. All right, next question. Reductions in activities funding was necessary, clubs, sports, music, etc. Which would be your first choice? Eliminate some levels, grades, or sections. So what that means is we want to, we would take out a lower grade of, say, music teaching or modified sports. So a level in something is what the first one is. The second one is basically eliminating maybe certain sports or certain other types of clubs. So that's just a general opinion. We have fundraising, making them club activities more favorable just a bit. I understand that the galleys stuff, that's all I ask. I'm trying to get a feel for what people are... All right, another couple seconds. So a, we need some levels, fundraising, and D makes some club activities. This question's a little less relevant given the last one. So if you were to do a pay-for-play fee for some kinds of activities, clubs, music, sports, etc., what is the most you'd be willing to pay for that activity? The most you'd be willing to pay for your child just paying that activity? All right, another couple seconds. Nothing, so pretty even, nothing to 50. All right, next question. Third, reductions in transportation expenses, which would you choose first? Again, each and choose one. Okay, and outsourcing the transportation services, if that's a possibility. Looking consolidation pickups for the kids when they walk to several points instead of individual pickups. Don't pickups within an aisle half the school or all buildings on a secret bus when they work non-studying. Five more seconds. All right, so... So, okay, I thought we could solidify the kids who go to... In order to reduce building ground expense, would you A, delay maintenance of the buildings? B, reduce cleaning position for senior who's contracted service costs? Or that's no longer... Another five seconds. All right, here. Should we share positions, including teachers and administrators, for other districts? Yes or no? Couple seconds. Only two choices.
Mr. Serney, could I ask a question while you're waiting for the response?
Yes.
You asked what was the minimum size class? And I know I'm cutting back at some point, you may have to cut teachers. Why didn't we ask for the optimal size class?
Uh, didn't think of it. It's a simple question. Didn't think of that question. Didn't have that much time for the question. But it's a good question. So, uh... Two-thirds, yes, one-third, no, yes, two-thirds, no. Should we close the GLP building for the next three years?
Do we have enough facts to make an answer to that question? You haven't told us what the population ratios are.
No, don't know. I just want to get a feel for what people would view that. There's a lot of, obviously, there's a lot of work to be done around that. Timing, costs, cost savings, all that. Just a general opinion. All right, five more seconds. Okay. Two-thirds or so, yes? Okay? Should we start charging a small fee for... Should we start charging a small fee for all non-school groups to use district facilities? Okay, there. As long as you have to come in fast.
I have a question.
Yes.
My little device says number eight. I haven't voted on the last two questions yet. Eight is turned blue up there. Somebody else have an eight?
Is there a number? It's the number on your screen.
It isn't this number here?
No.
Oh, good.
Actually, none of these answers are putting out a registry. These are all pre-worked out. Which would you rather do to close the budget gaps? Reduce expenses $500,000 more this year or reduce it $1 million next year? Listen, I'm not voting, but it's a pretty real, it's a pretty real question. $500,000 more in the current budget that we're looking at or $1 million the year after that? You can't leave until he asks you a question. So we still doing math out there?
There's no lot of re-answers. A little bit of...
See, I hope it's not a strategy, right? Okay, that concludes the question and answer. We'll try to put a summary together so you, up on the website so you can see, see the results that came in in case you forgot what we talked through today. So we do want to make sure you return your clickers or we're going to have total budget gaps as we have to replace them. Let me ask this, was that interesting, waste of time, valuable? Would you, like, we're trying to come up with the best we can ways to do this. Any comments? All right, so I thank you all for coming to try to get all our input that we can, if we can on Monday. With all the business detail, I have to make a motion in our executive session to discuss advice provided in legal counsel.
I did get a question about the survey. Somebody asked me if they're going to put something up back on the website if people can continue to comment. Then either survey or place the comment, something that'll...